Good evening. I'd like to call to order the April 1st, 2025, meeting of the North Bend City Council. Can the clerk please call roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Mark Jocelyn.
Present.
Councilmember Brendan Elwood.
Present.
Councilmember Alan Gottheff.
Here.
Councilmember Heather Cullen.
Here.
Councilmember Christina Rustic.
Present.
Councilmember Susan Torgerson.
Here.
Councilmember Errol Tremolata.
Here.
All are present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Will the clerk please lead us in the flag salute? All right. Well, good evening, everybody. It's nice to see a full crowded room online. I hope we have a few people online tonight. At this time, I would like to present certificates of completion to our Citizens Academy participants this year. Would all 2025 Citizen Academy graduates come forward at this time?
Thanks. I'm always ready.
Okay.
First of all, we are very proud of you and we expect to see a lot of civic engagement and to be a good voice for the work that the city of North Bend does. And we really enjoyed getting to know you. One of the best things is right away you guys connected and you were talking and you were laughing and you were sharing stories. Sometimes it takes a little while to warm up to each other, but you guys just dove right in. So it's been great and I hope to see you around town and to see you here in April. So congratulations. It's wonderful.
Thank you for jumping on board. This is great. All right. Next up is Susan Newman.
Thank you very much. Great job. Thanks for everything.
Okay, Rob. Where did Rob go? I know she's here somewhere.
Yes.
Okay, we'll give that to her. Thank you so much. Oh, appreciate it. Our Rachel Johnston.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You've been a nurse in over enough years.
I have 33 years.
I know.
I love that. Perry Bell, that's Rob's husband, and I think he's not here. They probably are having a great night.
It's public date night.
And not at Citizens Academy. And Nick. Nick, appreciate you stepping up. We've only had a great time. We'll break.
Thank you so much. You're awesome. Beautiful.
Good idea.
Mary Lee. Participating. Kim. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Great team.
And Keith. Glad you didn't get hurt in the parking lot. That's right. Kate.
I went to the bed.
You've got a heck of a voice. I do know that. Carol. Karen or Cara?
Karen. Thank you very much for all that you do and more to come.
And Jenny's.
Thank you, Jenny. Thank you so much, Erin.
George. Never too shy, George.
And Marley, thanks for the treats.
Oh, that's nice. And you. Okay, and Dorothy. Appreciate you, Dorothy.
We'll get these two.
Yeah. Okay, Cory.
April. April.
And yeah. Yeah, this year. We'll find her too. We'll find her too.
Their study of North Bend residents, we know where they live.
Of course we know.
And Ella. Nice to meet you.
Good work in prosecuting. How many, 40 or 20?
A lot. Almost one. 91. Probably does. Thanks for everything.
All right, we're going to do one last photo with all your certificates if you'll hold them up with the mayor. Oh, yes. Editing on the phone.
Do I have to look on the dice or? Oh.
It's nice work.
Yeah, keep going.
I think Ted wants this one.
I thought Jenny, you don't want to eat. It would take a while. We're not that young.
Three, two, one. Perfect. Our Citizen Academy newly graduated individuals there, you're welcome to stay for the entire meeting. Start to finish, or you can go. It's either or. We don't force anybody to stay. But thank you very much. Okay, before we move on to consent agenda, I would like to announce that we have added an item at the end of tonight's agenda. It's AB 25-035. It's going to be item number 15, I believe. And I'm also pulling item number nine, which is AB 25-029 from the agenda tonight. And we're going to move this to an item to a work study on a date agreeable going forward. All right, you got that? Okay, well now move on to the consent agenda. We have five items on our consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
Uh, Mayor?
Yeah.
I think, may I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
You sure can.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr., my favorite mayor pro tem next to me, and seconded by Ms. Christina Rustic. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, any pose? All motion carries and is unanimous. We're going to move on. Before we move on to citizen comments, as indicated on tonight's agenda, if you're attending remotely and would like to submit public comment, please submit your written comments via in-person drop-off, mail, fax, or email to esopadall@northbendwa.gov by 5:00 PM of the day of the meeting. We are no longer taking public comments for those attending remotely via Zoom unless they've reached out to the city clerk in advance of the meeting to request accommodations. We'll now move on to citizen comments. At this time, if you would like to comment on an item that's not on our agenda tonight, we would invite you to come forward to the podium. If you have requested accommodation with the city clerk and wish to speak during citizen comments, please raise your hand through the virtual platform and we will take your comments after in-person comments. Please remember to state your name, address, and you have three minutes for the record to speak. And do we have anybody? Hi, Michael.
Yes.
Welcome.
Hi, Mike Thomas, 1231 La Forest. It's been a long time since no C at council. I'm reminded by what today is. It's kind of interesting. And perhaps I've had a change of heart, like I think we need to spend $250 million on a pool facility atop a 25-story building. And I fully expect to endorse your water system plan. Happy April fools. However, those issues remain important to me. Certainly, the costs of things that we do in the city are quite important. We need to maintain and control our costs for things that are not absolutely necessary. I think statewide, countywide, citywide, we're facing budgetary concerns. And that's very important that we maintain and control costs. The second thing is, of course, I'm very concerned with inappropriate development. We definitely, we need to look about preserving our natural character and resources. Things in proximity to development can be quite impactful, and you may hear about this more later. And that includes not only development, but also city projects. And thirdly, of course, water has always been a focus of mine. It's been a cause celebre for more than a decade. Also, on a more serious note, I've taken a bit of an advocacy position for those that are disabled. I think it's very important that we have procedures in council that respect those that participate remotely. And I'm hoping to see dramatic improvements as the city has invested in that, both at council and at many other meetings. I have personally experienced, you know, poor quality audio and a few other problems that I think need to be addressed. And for me, these are important. And I think it's also important to recognize that it's important for those that may participate remotely, of which I do often and expect to continue in the future, that we do address these things. Thank you very much. This includes my comment. Thank you.
Very much. Anybody else wish to make a comment or two? Come on up, George.
Yeah, I just, two things real quick. One is I just want to really say thank you to the entire staff and everybody who put together the Citizens Academy. The work you did putting together the presentations and everything was apparent. And I have a much better understanding of how the city government works, the goals and the challenges you face. Mary, Lisa, Bree, everybody who showed up to almost every session, thank you very much. It was very apparent and appreciated. Next is the proposal in the last county meeting by CPSM for the police department had a lot of data. One thing that was pretty apparent to me listening to that is that it did not seem to be an apples-to-apples comparison to the services currently being provided by the Snoqualmie Police Department. For example, despite current challenges, Snoqualmie provides a mental health professional and school resource officer. I know that they're working on trying to replace at least one of those. Those were noticeably missing in the proposal to build your own police department and, in my opinion, are critical for crime prevention. There was a comment about municipalities that were happy with starting their own force. And one of the things was mentioned, it was typically in a municipality that had around 30,000 people. We're not anywhere near close to that, so I just want us to be very careful as we start thinking about spending the amount of money that it would take. Finally, Captain Gary, I'm not going to try to pronounce your last name because it will be horrible. But I do think, I do hope that you and the Snoqualmie Police Department think about some of the lack of transparency that I think people in the city have felt has been there. And in your proposal, you do work to address that, to kind of keep things moving forward, because I did appreciate the time with you guys. I thought it was a very good session. I think you're doing a good job. But I do think there is just some friction with, as I asked in the session, the drama. So that's it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, George. Anybody? Thank you very much, George. Sorry. Okay, Deb, come on up.
Hello, hello. Deborah Landers, 14615 438th Avenue Southeast. Let's say I'm here once again for North Bend Art and Industry. I wanted to invite all of you. Have fun. We now have an actual staff person at the Center for Creativity, starting this Wednesday. So I would welcome you to come and drop in and check out our new Center for Creativity and watch it as it grows into a true maker space. So Ellen Rowan is our staff person. She comes with a bachelor's in arts and a master's in school counseling. So this is one of the things that we are using to help make sure that our after-school activities are covered adequately. More than adequately, because she's amazing. One of the first things that I think we talked about before was the Teen Maker Meetups. They're every Thursday from 2:30 to 4:30. I'm going to leave some flyers with you. Encourage, if you have teens or if you know teens, encourage them to drop in. It's informal. They can come whenever they want to after school. They can leave whenever they want to. There'll be several creative activities, as well as one science and technology activity at least each day, each Thursday. And then the other thing that we're finding that now that we've moved into our new space and we have a lot more space, things are growing. So the Makers Meetup, which has always been once a month, on the third Wednesday of each month, Thursday of each month, sorry, has always been very popular, between 15 to 25 people each month. It's doubled in size, and so we have now doubled the days. So it's twice a month. Hopefully, by the end of the year, we'll be at four times a month. But again, we're really growing. Things are happening. We'd love for you to see the space. We'll have an open house sometime this summer. And then the last thing is Art Off the Rails, June 21st. Little change to our collaboration with the city of Snoqualmie and the Train Depot. We will consist, we will still have three locations, but mostly for a community art project. All of the artists, all of the music, all of the really great activities will be here at our depot park in North Bend. So please pray for good weather, and that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Deb. Anybody else? Anybody online wish to speak, Erin?
Not tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, before I go forward, I think Mark has something to say.
Your Honor, I'd like to move the consent agenda.
Second. Okay. And if you'd like to speak to anything there? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Brennan. We consent agenda has been unanimously approved. And we're going to move on to announcements, presentations, and appointments. Item number six is a proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and I will begin to read that in a moment. All right, whereas sexual assault is pervasive, every 68 seconds, someone is sexually assaulted in the United States. And whereas sexual violence impacts everybody, anyone can be a victim of sexual violence and people who commit sexual abuse, assault, and harassment exist in all of our communities. This underscores why it's important for all of us to care about sexual violence and take steps to promote the safety and well-being of others. And whereas Black, Indigenous, and other people of color, people living in poverty, LGBTQ people, elders, people with disabilities, and others who have been historically oppressed are disproportionately affected by sexual violence in significant and complex ways. And whereas sexual assault is among the most under-reported crimes for many reasons, but survivors who are already most marginalized face additional barriers to reporting, such as language, immigration, status, or disability. And whereas ending sexual violence requires us to address racism, sexism, and all forms of oppression that can contribute to the perpetration of sexual assault. And whereas sexual violence exists on a continuum of behaviors that includes racism, sexist, transphobic, homophobic, ableist, or other hate speech. This ranges from rape jokes to verbal harassment to physical assaults. And whereas survivors of sexual assault may never forget their victimization, but they can heal with support from family, friends, and their communities. Sexual assault programs across King County and Washington State offer free and confidential support, advocacy, information, and resources to survivors. And whereas by working together as a community, we can alleviate the trauma of sexual violence by ensuring supportive resources are available to all survivors, while standing up to actively disrupting harmful attitudes and behaviors that contribute to sexual assault. Now, therefore, I, Mary Miller, Mayor, join advocates and communities throughout King County in taking action to prevent sexual violence by standing with survivors and proclaiming April 2025 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of North Bend and encourage all to commit to a safer future for all children, young people, adults, and families in our community. Thank you very much.
Hi, thank you for having me. Thank you all for having me here tonight. My name is Kayla Shaflewski. I live here in North Bend. And I am also the Resource Line Manager at the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center, a nonprofit that serves the city and all communities throughout King County. I'm here to accept the Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month proclamation on behalf of our organization and want to thank you for being part of the solution to sexual violence. First, to the survivors in our community, I want to say you are not alone. Sexual assault is common. Half of women and one-third of men have experienced sexual assault in their lifetime. People from marginalized communities due to disability, race, or ethnicity, or their gender or sexual identities, to name a few, are at even greater risk. Chances are that you know someone who has been sexually abused. The trauma of sexual assault is something that can affect a survivor's mental, physical, and behavioral health, their ability to form healthy relationships, remain in school or in the workplace, and so much more. But recovery from trauma of sexual assault is possible with support. Casark assisted 4,300 individual survivors and their family members in the last year alone. Almost half of Casark clients are children and teens. We know young people are the most vulnerable to sexual assault and the least likely to speak up about it and be believed when they do. I want to end with another message to survivors. Free and confidential help is available to survivors or anyone who needs information about sexual assault. Our 24-hour resource line is a good starting point at 888-99-VOICE. We always say, we can't change what we can't talk about. Thank you for your leadership and willingness to be loud about sexual assault. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kayla. And just for everybody's notification, Kayla, you're with King County Sexual Assault Resource Center. Is that correct?
I am.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see, item number seven, we're going to move on, is a presentation with Recology and an update. And Alyssa Campbell is here from Recology. We welcome you and can't wait to hear you fill us in on what's happening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. It's a pleasure to be here. If you can believe it, this is the exactly one-year mark anniversary of the Solid Way Services agreement with Recology King County. So I'm very excited to speak about this with you here today. Again, my name's Alyssa Campbell. I'm the Government and Community Relations Manager at Recology King County. And then also with me here today is our Senior General Manager, Anthony Burcato, and our Assistant General Manager, Kevin Bumgarner. So we have a presentation prepared for you to talk about how the year went. And let's get into it. And I do not know how to, yeah, there we go. Whoever's doing the tech, shout out to you. So just some reminders about the new contract for Solid Way Services in North Bend. There's some really great items in here. New to North Bend, so that includes access to our Recology store in Issaquah. So that Recology store allows for residents to drop off hard-to-recycle items and get customer service questions answered. As well, we have extensive waste share outreach we've been performing with businesses and multifamily properties throughout the city. So definitely focused on waste diversion, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in this presentation. The new contract also includes benefits for inclement weather experienced in North Bend. So it snows here, right? We'll talk a little bit about how the snow season went this year as well. And it's quite windy here as well. So we have storm event coverage in that contract. There's brand-new garbage trucks. If you've seen them on the streets, they're shiny and they're very fuel-efficient. So that's a new feature. In fact, updated performance requirements for customer service, so including, you know, hold time metrics and seconds to answer metrics, things like that. And a last thing included on here is our collection services at city-sponsored events. So there's quite a few events that we come out to in North Bend and provide services at and do out education as well. The next slide. So how did the implementation go? I will say it went as smooth as it could have gone. We have an incredible team here at North Bend, honestly. You guys have an awesome communications crew. I have to do a shout out to Bree Kevren and Carrie Smith. They just do an amazing job. They've been such great partners, getting the message out and, you know, aligning with, making sure that people are calling into Recology at the start of the contract and verifying their information. Of course, shout out to Dan Marsinko as well, facilitating that process. So those first months prior to the contract and at the start of the contract on April 1st, we had a lot of messaging going out. We also had a lot of infield follow-up, so our drivers taking notes out in the field and then lots of supervisors on our team and lead drivers going out and verifying information. We had our Recology recollect calendar available for folks to sign up so they can get reminders about their service day and holidays and things like that. Jumping right into how the year went. So customer service, on the customer service side, we had a pretty steady flow of emails and calls throughout the months. You can see there's quite a spike actually between April and June, and that's quite normal for the start of a new contract. A lot of people were calling in to make sure that we had their information correct, make sure that, you know, they were aware of all the services that were included in the new contract start. So those calls and emails came in. And amazingly, after those 12 months, so this only goes up to February, but the trailing 12 months here in North Bend, we did an average of the customer satisfaction score. So that's just a voluntary survey that residents and businesses can take at the end of a call. And there was an average 4.4 out of 5 here in North Bend. So it's definitely on the higher end for sure. We take that as, you know, things are going really well here in the city. And looking at the operations side, again, it's kind of a similar graph, right? You see the high slope there. This misses per thousand collections target we have, it's just what we strive for to make sure we're getting everybody collected. That first month you see there, the one miss per thousand, we're a little bit above that mark. Again, that's related to making sure we have the right information. We have all the services, you know, there's a big transition between the previous hauler and having Recology in your city. So during that time, we were making sure that that data was validated. And I'll have to make a correction here actually about the miss per thousand. The 40 total misses per month being the target, it's actually 25 misses per month. That would be the target. So April, we had about 25 misses, and in February, we had a single miss. So things are also going well on the operations side. And looking back at our winter weather, this photo here, you see that's one of our support vehicles. It's actually our senior operations manager, Bill Emel's truck. It has an awesome snowplow tool added to it. He was during the entire week following up with drivers, checking in on the different precarious situations that we encountered. Our trucks, prior to the winter weather we experienced here in North Bend, were equipped with snow tires and chains. So we were ready for it. We knew, we knew, we know that it snows in the mountains. So again, I have to give another shout out to the North Bend communications team because the partnership in communicating different service changes and delays was crucial in making sure that, you know, people were aware of when to put their carts out or what was going on with that snow, that snow experience. So. Excellent. So outreach throughout this year, and I'll give a shout out to Mary Miller. She has been awesome, getting us connected with businesses. And of course, the North Bend Downtown Association, we've had, you know, opportunities to meet with businesses at the merchants meeting and then also at door-to-door outreach that we conducted, making sure that folks were aware of the need to compost and how that's beneficial. And also the Washington Organics Management laws that are kind of incrementally in effect. So we'll continue to do that outreach in the city of North Bend. But this past year, we had several dozen technical assistances that were performed with businesses and multifamily properties. We also performed door hangings at Mountain View Apartments and Town Mobile Parks. So door hanging, what is that? That blue bag that you see on the left, that is a recycle right bag. That's what we call it. It helps people not It helps people not put plastic bags in their recycling bin. We provide a lot of extra information with that bag as well, like information about the Recology store and anything that the property managers will want us to send out. So if that includes something about bulky items or hazardous waste, we will custom make those flyers as well. And we also recruited specifically through the Waste Area Team, eight commercial and multifamily recyclers subscriptions. So going to continue that work this year. And I mentioned there's a lot of events in North Bend. So you guys are such a busy community. There's so much going on, which is great. We had so much fun this past year servicing your community and started off with the Snow Valley Chamber. They had a technical assistance that we were able to get connected with businesses at. And then beyond that, there was the Beautification Days, which we'll be at again this year. You see that photo there. North Bend just stays beautiful because you have such an engaged community who's willing to volunteer and pick up litter that inevitably ends up on the street. There's the Downtown Block Party, the Festival at Mount Si, North Bend Trick-or-Treat Street, and holidays that we were in attendance at as well. So we'll be looking forward to joining you guys with those events in 2025 and doing more outreach with the community. And I keep bringing up 2025, so the fun doesn't stop. In North Bend, you have ongoing yard waste collection events that we partner with you on. So starting actually this weekend and through October 11th, we'll be supporting those events. The next shred event is on September 27th. So this is just an opportunity, everybody mark your calendars, get ready. And then, as mentioned, we'll be at the annual events hosted by the city and hopefully more this year as well. Waste Area Education will continue, will continue to recruit businesses for compost service, get them to decrease garbage service. And then our Recology store in Isaguas will continue to host workshops. So we do that on a quarterly basis. That includes features like scissor sharpening, mending workshop, things of that nature. And our material recovery facility, not only will we be adding a technological advancement to that facility, but we'll also continue to do MRF tours. So we do tours of that facility on a rolling basis, and you're all welcome to join, everybody in the crowd as well. We do public tours and private tours. So if you want to bring your family or your friends, we are very happy to schedule that. And with that, that's my presentation. I look forward to any questions or feedback that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa. Any questions from council? No, you're fine.
Yeah, thank you for coming and sharing this information. Very appreciative. Just a question about recycling and recycling of styrofoam-type products. That is now available to us. Can you remind us what that, what that opportunity is?
Yes, thank you for that question. So we do styrofoam recycling at the Recology store. There is a daily limit, and there's some requirements that styrofoam, so, you know, it doesn't have a bunch of food on it or tape, things like that. And by the daily limit, you can bring out, I think it's about 32 gallons of styrofoam per day. So if you have a lot in your, in your closet that you've accumulated, I know spring cleaning, this is the time of year, right? You can come out to the Recology store and they will get that recycled with our partner. And it's totally free of charge for North Bend Recology customers.
That's great. Any other questions?
To piggyback off of the recycling, you have a textile program where you can recycle old towels and sheets and rugs?
Absolutely, yeah. So that's, rugs would not be included, but there's quite a few different kinds of textiles and belts and bags, things like that, that are accepted at the Recology store as well. And that is totally free of charge. So again, there's a daily limit there for how much textiles they can accept, but they do accept that at the Recology store as well. And while we're on the topic of special items, I'll also just add, cooking oil is a new feature of North Bend's curbside program. So if you have clean cooking oil that you're, well, clean, right? You use your cooking oil. It's not clean anymore. It just doesn't have pieces of food in it. Again, there's requirements with that, but we do curbside pickup of that material as well in North Bend.
Thank you, Alyssa. Anybody else have any questions? Susan.
So how do you do the cooking? Like what kind of container do, do us residents put it in?
Yeah, so it's a clear container that has a cap on it. So maybe like an empty, a water bottle that you have. There's, there's a lot of clear containers that you could potentially use. And like I said, it has to have a secure lid. Again, there's requirements to how much you can put out at one time, but we would ask that you put your address on there and also call ahead with our customer service, just to make sure that our driver can expect it when he's coming out to the city.
On top of something or just on the side of it?
It would be on the side of the container, yes. Good questions. Thank you for asking them.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? Thank you, Alyssa, for joining us. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much for having me.
Have a great night. Okay, we're going to move on to introductions. Let there be light. Item number eight, AB 25-028, Resolution Resending, Resolution 957, and Reestablishing Council Rules of Procedure. And I'm going to take it away and read them summary for you all. The city council is reestablishing its procedural rules for public comments at city council meetings with modifications from the prior rules of procedure. Public comments will be allowed consistently with the Open Public Meetings Act and the council's past practices. However, there will be one set public comment period during each council meeting before all agenda items are addressed. Public comment on an item, on items on and off the agenda will be permitted during this time. This does not affect public hearings, which will afford separate public participation time during those public hearing agenda items. The amended public comment procedures also provide that public comments will be limited to three minutes in length per participant, and each participant will be allowed to speak once during the public comment period. This procedural update will allow for public participants to be clear on when public comment is permitted, and it will allow for more expeditious public input at council meetings. The council rules of procedure for council meetings have been updated, and therefore the council should rescind Resolution 957 and adopt this resolution, reestablishing the rules of procedure with the updates. The Finance and Administration Committee reviewed this resolution on March 11th, 2025. Okay. Council, do you have any clarifying questions? If any members of the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we'd invite you to come to the podium at this time. If you have requested accommodation with a city clerk and wish to speak, please raise your hand through the virtual platform, and we'll take your comments after in-person comments. Please remember to state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak for the record. Anybody? Hi, Michael.
I think I'll be making a couple trips to the podium tonight. Mike Thomas, 1231 La Forest Drive, SC. I know y'all have received my comments in opposition to this change, and I feel it shouldn't be passed as-is. It really does the opposite of the brand statement. It actually diminishes citizen opportunity for engagement. Considering like overall items where you might have multiple items on resolutions or ordinances, three minutes may not be adequate if folks want to comment on more than one. Comment at the start of the meeting really diminishes the public's statements. Taking statements in advance right as you're about to debate an item, I think, is important, not minutes or even hours away from debate. I think the public, also in their existing procedure, gets to benefit from staff introduction. And also, many times I've noticed council will ask questions of staff before public comment is taken. That will be, that will be eliminated from this new procedure. I also see a defect in the consent agenda procedure. How do citizens actually give input to consent agenda item that's moved to the public agenda that would occur before comment, public comment period? I would also suggest that, you know, perhaps more strict procedures, the chair cutoff comment that's not on point, I think is perhaps more appropriate to reduce time. I think would be, would be, would be a reasonable item. I also feel clarity on ordinances that get a second reading. I think people need to state whether an ordinance actually gets a second hearing and when it's put on the agenda, not a variable one, adopt that as a final reading or require a second. I think more clarity would be fair to citizens, so that they can have an opportunity to come in a second time and hear from the benefit of the debate. The other thing is, is I also believe, speaking about disabilities, you need better procedure to handle problems with AV. I think this is a real problem when participants can't hear or participate in the debate or what you're saying. For example, I've noticed in the past, there's no way to signal to the host that there's a problem, and I'm an often remote participant. And I think you need to recess or even suspend the meeting to address that. And similarly, you need to address telephone participants in the same way. Again, I, I think you've, you've tried to consider something here, but I think it does the in fact opposite, and I recommend you don't adopt this, this change and take some citizen input. Thank you very much. This concludes my comment.
Good, Michael. Anybody else wish to comment? Podium, anybody online here? Thank you very much.
Motion to approve AB 25-28, Resolution Reestablishing the Council Rules of Procedures for Council Meetings and Resending Resolution 957.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Gottelf and second by Christina Rustic. Would you like to speak to your motion, Mr. Gottelf?
No, I'll just let the motion speak for itself and let our council weigh in.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rustic, do you have a comment to make?
Just a brief one. So this, this resolution is not meant to stifle any public comment, but to allow more focused comment and consideration for the public's time at the beginning of a meeting. Many topics do include a public hearing, which we've discussed early in the process. And as council, as council member, I welcome emails and phone calls at any time about any concerns or input on a specific agenda topic, where I can seek to ask questions and understand thoroughly a resident's opinion more clearly. So I support this. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Christina. Anybody else wish to make a, Errol?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, I just want to be clear that this was discussed at our retreat. So council did weigh in multiple times in conversation about this. This did not just show up on the agenda tonight, and it was something we took seriously. I will say, from my perspective, having heard feedback from what I will say, my demographic of young families, this is critical because we've had folks that have wanted to speak on a topic on the agenda and have been, had to wait, in some cases, many long hours to have their item come to, come to the point in the agenda where they can speak on it. So I think this will be great. I think to echo Councilman Barrestic, it'll be more pointed. Also, for those folks that have directly reached out to me, you'll now be able to speak on any topic on the agenda immediately. And if you have to go home to, for your family or other reasons, you don't have to stay for the whole night. So I think it's a critical piece of change to our operations, and it also aligns with many, many other cities and how they operate public comments. So I support it.
Thank you, Errol. Anybody else from council have anything you wish to say? Thank you. Mark.
As I've said before, it's a balance to do this, and this falls in that category. For me, I am persuaded that encouraging more participation is the hoped-for outcome, that people's ability to say to their partner or family or others that they're coming to comment and participate in this process, knowing that they can be home in, oh, half an hour and not two and a half hours later, is persuasive to me, as opposed to the alternative of folks waiting for hours and not being certain when they'll get to speak, which I think pushes against broader publication. And for that reason, I too will be in support. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else from council I might have missed? Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. I too see benefit here, but I'm also deeply concerned when we start adjusting the public's ability to interact with us, the public's ability to respond to specific items. I see the benefit of folks that, you know, need to come in and say their, whatever their piece is on whatever agenda item we have, and then they have the luxury of leaving. But sometimes we have stacked agendas, and my concern there is that we'd be limiting three minutes for something that perhaps somebody may have three or four things to talk on. So since we're adjusting the public ability to engage us, I'm concerned about that. And I would actually prefer this to be in more of a hearing dynamic where we keep it open for a little bit longer. We hear more from the public on this particular procedural modification. I will not be supporting this tonight for those reasons, but I do want to echo that I understand, appreciate, and agree with some of the benefits as to why we are considering this tonight.
Thank you, Brennan. And I think I got everybody else. All right, the motion before us is to approve AB 25-028, Resolution Reestablishing the Council Rules of Procedure for Council Meetings and Resending Resolution 957. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, six, four, and one opposed. Motion does pass. Item number, whoops, not nine. We're going on to item number 10, excuse me. Pardon me for that. Item number 10, AB 25-030, Motion Authorizing King County Grant Contract Amendment Regarding Meadowbrook Loop Trail Project. Mr. McCarty, thank you for joining us tonight, and would you provide the staff report for us, please?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is really the story of keeping a good project moving forward even when you find some hurdles along the way. So the Meadowbrook Farm has had a loop trail in the Meadowbrook Farm master plan since that plan was developed back in the 1990s. So in the depths of COVID, the partners associated with Meadowbrook Farm, North Bend, Snoqualmie, and Siview, together with the Meadowbrook Farm Preservation Association, put together a proposal that we applied for grants for. One was a Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program grant, the other was a King County grant. We secured the King County grant, but did not secure the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program grant. So to make this prairie loop trail happen, we scaled the project back at the time in a way that we thought we could design and construct the project and make a limited version of it happen. As our intended consultant started to look further into that, we discovered that there was really not funds to do both design and construction. And so if there's one thing that a planner likes to do, it's to see a plan through to fruition. So we've continued to work on seeing how we would make the project happen. And that is possible if we change the scope of the project to be a design-only project and come back at a later point to implement the construction of the project separately. So worked with King County, worked with City of Snoqualmie, and with our prospective consultant to revise that scope. King County, the grant provider of the King County Open Space Grant, has been supportive of this and is supportive of a revised grant contract. So what the revised grant contract is for is for a design-only project that brings the project all the way through full project design and conceptual permitting to have a shovel-ready project for the next phase. So what's before you tonight is a contract amendment for the King County Open Space or Parks Capital Grant project for the Meadowbrook Farm Prairie Loop Trail design.
Thank you very much, Mike. Any questions from council or comments, clarifying or otherwise? Oh, it's first. Okay, Christina, and then, sorry.
Yeah, just wanted to clarify the, so this is design-only, I understand that. What is the expected plan once we get the project shovel-ready for the remaining construction costs? How does that work?
Yeah, so we do anticipate going after grant funds again to make the project happen. We are hoping to lean on Snoqualmie to lead that effort. This project is within the City of Snoqualmie. Meadowbrook Farm is jointly owned by the both cities, but because permitting would happen in Snoqualmie, it would make sense for Snoqualmie to lead the next effort.
Mr. Gottelf.
That question answered it. Was going to ask about grant possibility, so two and one.
Perfect. Anybody else? Okay. Oh, sorry, Heather.
So during the design process, and I imagine they are well aware to look into the tribe and delicate areas.
Yeah, yeah. So the, the design process will include a lot of scoping. That will include all of the project partners associated with Meadowbrook Farm, which includes Snoqualmie Tribe.
Anybody else? Brendan, I don't know if you have any questions up there? Okay, just checking in. All good. Okay, if any members of the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we would invite you to come forward to the podium at this time. If you have requested accommodation with a city clerk and wish to speak, please raise your hand through the virtual platform, and we will take your comments after in-person comments. Please remember to state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak for the record. Anybody? Anybody online here? Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Cole, would you please make the motion?
Yes. Motion to approve AB 25-030, Authorizing the Mayor to Execute and Administer a Contract Amendment and all other necessary documents to receive the King County Parks Capital and Open Space Grant. the King County Parks Capital and Open Space Grant Contract Number six three two eight seven six three for the Meadowbrook Farm Prairie Loop Trail Project in a form and content approved by the city attorney.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gottel. Motion by Ms. Colan and second by Mr. Gottel. Ms. Colan, do you have any comments you'd like to make to your motion?
This is a project that they have been dreaming about, thinking about for a long time, and I wish this project well.
Very nice. Mr. Gottel, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
No, I think she did a great job.
Thank you. Any other council members have any comments to make? Oh, Mark.
Persistence is a virtue. Something is more than nothing. Please hang in and keep moving this forward. I appreciate your sticking with it and bringing it forward.
Thank you very much. The motion before us is to approve A B twenty five dash thirty authorizing the mayor to execute and administer a contract amendment and all other necessary documents to receive the King County Parks Capital and Open Space Grant Contract six three two eight seven six three for the Meadowbrook Farm Prairie Loop Trail Project in a form and content approved by the city attorney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Item number eleven, motion authorizing contract with H J A Brennan for Meadowbrook Trail Project Design. Mr. McCarty, we'll go back to you for staff report, please.
Thank you. So this is part two of the same proposal. So Meadowbrook Farm Loop Trail. And Seive was originally the primary coordinator of this project. And they commenced a process to seek requests for qualifications for the project. There was a selection team that involved Seive, the city of North Bend and the city of Snoqualmie staff. And through that process, Seive received seven statements of a qualification and we interviewed four consultants. J A Brennan is the preferred consultant and is before you tonight with the contract. So under the contract, J A Brennan would bring forward design plans for the project and prepare implementation ready draft permits. So the staff recommend approval of the project in order to move forward.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. McCarty. Any questions or comments for Mr. McCarty from council? No? Okay, if any members of the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we would invite you to come forward to the podium at this time. If you have any requested accommodation with a city clerk and wish to speak, please raise your hand through the virtual platform and you have, you will have your comments taken after in person comments. Please remember to state your name, your address, and for the record, you have three minutes to speak. Anybody wished? Anybody online? Okay. Councilmember Tremolata, will you please make the motion?
Yes. Motion to approve A B twenty five dash zero three one authorizing the mayor to execute and administer a professional services agreement with J A Brennan for design of the Meadowbrook Farm Prairie Loop Trail Project in a form and content acceptable to the city attorney in an amount not to exceed four hundred ninety nine thousand nine hundred seventy six dollars.
Well done. And do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mike. Okay, motion by Mr. Tremolata and second by Ms. Colan. Mr. Tremolata, would you like to add any comments to your motion?
Just that I appreciate that we're finding a way to use funds that were approved in twenty twenty three and not lose them and to councilmember Jocelyn's comment, continue this project moving forward to the best that we can.
Thank you very much. Ms. Colan, do you have any comments to make?
My heart is with Meadowbrook Farm and Prairie, and I hope it goes well.
Wonderful. Okay, anybody on council have any comments they'd like to make this time? Brendan? No? Okay, the motion before us is to approve A B twenty five dash zero three one authorizing the mayor to execute and administer a professional services agreement with J A Brennan for design of the Meadowbrook Farm Prairie Loop Trail Project in a form and content acceptable to the city attorney in an amount not to exceed four hundred ninety nine thousand nine hundred seventy six dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all. That motion passes and is unanimous. Moving right along to item number twelve, A B twenty five dash thirty two motion authorizing negotiation agreement with Related Northwest. Mr. Henderson, will you please provide this staff report?
Okay. Thank you very much and good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm joined tonight by Isaiah Corbey. She is related Northwest and is serving as the project manager for the two thirty main project. So she can help answer any questions that you may have. So this is the next step in the two thirty main affordable housing project that we began in December of twenty twenty three when city council agreed to purchase the property at two thirty main with the intent to work with a developer to bring long term affordable housing that meets the needs of local residents and businesses. Through an RFP process that began in June twenty twenty four, an advisory committee of elected officials, nonprofit and for profit business leaders recommended Related Northwest to serve as the project developer. Related Northwest has extensive experience in public private partnerships, developing high quality multifamily affordable housing. And they are currently working with the city of Vancouver, Washington to build an affordable housing project in that community. As part of the process to develop the project, the city of North Bend and Related Northwest have negotiated a proposed exclusive negotiation agreement, or E N A. The E N A establishes the terms and conditions for the two parties to begin negotiations of a future disposition and development agreement to develop the project. This includes determining whether Related Northwest will purchase the property or enter to a long term ground lease with the city, develop a financing plan that obligates Related Northwest to apply for federal tax credits as well as other financing sources to develop the project, and allowing Related Northwest and its consultants to enter the site at two thirty main to obtain the data necessary to negotiate the D D A. Related Northwest will bear all the fees or expenses for consultants, contractors and surveyors during the negotiation process of the D D A. The E N A will expire on December thirty first, twenty twenty five unless the parties agree to mutually extend the negotiations. If so, the E N A allows for two six month extensions. There would only be a physical impact if the city enters into the E N A with Related Northwest and then withdraws from the E N A through no fault of Related Northwest. In that event, the city would be required to reimburse Related Northwest up to an amount not to exceed two hundred fifty thousand dollars for any and all third party costs. At the C E D meeting on March eighteenth, there was a question about whether there are any environmental issues at the property at two thirty main. Phase one ESA was conducted prior to the city's purchase of the property in December twenty twenty three. That survey did not find any existing environmental conditions and did not recommend any further investigation. Staff recommends approval of the motion for the mayor to execute and administer the exclusive negotiation agreement with Related Northwest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarty. Any questions or comments for, I'm sorry, Mr. Henderson. Pardon me. Any clarifying? Okay, Errol.
Yeah, two questions. Would the extensions, maybe this is a legal question, actually, would those two extensions you mentioned, would those be, are we approving those extensions through this approval or would that, if that time expires and you have to come back to us and ask for approval to extend? Or could we discuss where the project is at that point and say, maybe we have a different opinion?
As the E N A currently reads right now, the mayor or her designee can sign off on the extension if both parties agree to it. But we'd be happy to, you know, update, we'll update council along the way as we negotiate the D D A through the C E D committee. And so we can, if we're coming to the end of the calendar year and we need to do an extension, we'll definitely brief you on that as well.
Okay, and then the other question unrelated was the or the due diligence cost up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars. I think I asked this question in subcommittee, but any deliverables that are produced out of that due diligence would be transferred over to North, the city of North Bend in the event we parted ways?
Yes.
We would own those deliverables.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions? Christina?
Thank you. So I'm just, I'm trying to understand, does this, this, what's before us tonight in any way change what we would be expecting the developer to build with regard to our codes and our design standards, building heights and whatnot?
It doesn't set up the terms for that. This basically brings the two parties together to start negotiating what the project would look like. If there are any changes to design standard, just design standards, standards or allowances within the code, that would be part of that future development agreement that we bring to council. But this is just sort of that mechanism that begins the negotiation process.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Any, you can.
Thank you. So follow up to that. That's, thank you for that response. If with, if we enter into this contract and then we can't come to an agreement on a development agreement, would that be an example? Just hypothetically, would that be an example of where we part ways?
Yeah, we could part ways the time. Kendra?
So the termination provisions in this E N A are going to be on page one forty eight of your packet, section three point two. And it allows that for the agreement to terminate upon the expiration of the negotiation period or the occurrence of an event of default that is further described in section thirteen point one, mutual agreement of the parties or entry into that development agreement by the city and developer. And then if you can go down to thirteen point one to answer the remaining part of your question, council member, that is, if there was something that the developer defaulted on, for example, not meeting a schedule of performance or if there were other issues with insurance, et cetera, that would also be a condition that would terminate the agreement.
Thank you. Brendan, I see your hand up there. Brendan?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, Isaiah, for joining us during our committee meeting. Thank you for good introduction there, James. One of the questions that we posed that I think it might be the benefit for the council, just kind of in simple terms, is what would be an example of a situation where we would want to voluntary back voluntarily back out and have to pay that two hundred fifty thousand dollar fee? My recollection is that, I mean, we have mutually invested interests in to make this happen. So it's pretty, pretty much a long shot, but I recall you gave a pretty good response to that, James. Sorry to push you on the spot.
No, that's quite all right. I mean, I think there could be a reason where the city just decides not to move forward with that project. You know, it could be staff, staff working with council or council decision action that we decided that we just don't want to go this way anymore. That could be an example of that. Kendra, do you have any other potential examples of what that could look like?
I don't on the spot. I would just note that that provision is narrow for if the agreement is terminated by the city through no fault of the developer. So this would be maybe unforeseen circumstances that we don't know on the city side. But if there is fault or concerns that we are raising under the agreement with the developer, this provision arguably would not apply depending on the specific pack.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from council have any questions or clarifying questions? Okay, if any members of the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we invite you to come forward to the podium at this time. If you have requested accommodation with a city clerk and wish to speak, please raise your hand through the virtual platform and we will take your comments after in person comments. Please remember to state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak for the record. Michael?
Mike Thomas, twelve thirty one La Forest Drive, S E. I'm actually neutral on this proposal, but I can't help the observation of the excellent questions of council to staff that occurred before the last opportunity for public to comment on this. That will be lost next meeting. And that to me is an important loss when the public is listening to these things. And I just want to make that brief observation. I know this is, you know, potentially out of order, but I do want to make the observation. I think it's very important that the public have heard that and that will be disallowed under what you just adopted. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody else? Anybody online here? Very much. Councilmember Tremolata, please make the motion.
Motion to approve A B twenty five dash zero three two approving and authorizing the mayor to execute and administer an exclusive negotiation agreement and all other necessary documents with Related Northwest for an affordable housing project to be located at two thirty main avenue north, North Bend.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Motion by Mr. Tremolata and second by Ms. Colan. Mr. Tremolata, do you have anything you'd like to add to your motion?
Sure. I've participated in a number of meetings for this project up to this point. Have a bit of a background here. This is a very, very tall order. But this is a step in the direction that I believe the city and council and staff want to go to explore. How do we bring affordability to North Bend in a way that is specific to North Bend? Housing is incredibly difficult across the state, frankly, across the country. So I'll support this and I want to continue to see this process move forward. But I do want to reserve the right to change my opinion as we learn more through this process, but I will support this motion.
Thank you, Ms. Colan. Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I like this project. We have been trying our best. We don't even call it affordable housing anymore. We kind of call it attainable housing because the prices of housing in our area are completely ridiculous. I love it that we're sticking to sixty percent of the average median income versus eighty percent. And I do hope this goes through.
Thank you. Any other council members wish to make a comment or two? Christina, sure.
Just gonna say, I am also in agreement that this is an exciting project for the city and our opportunity for affordable housing. And I just want to make sure that it meets with what our expectations are and I reserve the right as well. I like how you said that to change my mind, but at this point, I support.
Great. Anybody else from council I've missed?
Sure.
Yes, I'll be voting in support. It's very exciting to see, I mean, every many entities in our region and in our state are seeking a path forward to try and address what is broadly recognized as one of the most serious issues that confront us as a society, and that's providing roofs over people's heads. This is this city's earnest and honest investment in trying to carve a path forward in this space to do exactly that. This is the next step on that process. It is important, as Ben's voiced today by a number of council, that the next step, when a development agreement is, will be brought forth if there is variance requested, which I have every expectation there will be. In part because this is going to be very challenging to pull off, but I'm certainly supportive and want to continue to acknowledge staff and their efforts as well as Related Northwest. I appreciate your presence here tonight and engagement and look forward to it going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jocelyn. Anybody else? I think we got everybody. Okay, the motion before us is to approve A B twenty five dash zero three two approving and authorizing the mayor to execute and administer an exclusive negotiation agreement and all other necessary documents with Related Northwest for an affordable housing project to be located at two three zero main avenue north, North Bend. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, one and all. Item number thirteen, A B twenty five dash zero three three motion authorizing contract with P H Consulting for Cedar Falls Way sidewalk, sidewalk project. Mr. Regos, we are looking to you for staff report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's page one hundred and fifty nine in your packet. We also have a vicinity map on page one seventy five in your packet. What this is about tonight is approving engineering design contract for a capital project specifically for Cedar Falls Way for a sidewalk, bike lane, storm drainage improvements from four thirty sixth avenue, which is the arterial that connects to exit thirty two A ninety and nearly one mile to the west down to Maloney Grove Avenue. So the city has experienced some residential growth in this particular area. I would estimate about four hundred new homes have been built in this area over the last twelve years or so, which results in about a thousand people additionally that did not live here back then. And so there is more pedestrians out in this area. This project would be a public safety improvement. It would be a quality of life improvement for residents. We would add sidewalks, ADA ramps, lighting at intersections that we don't have. The rough schedule that we're planning for is for this project to be designed in twenty twenty five. We have applied for a construction grant in the amount of two million dollars for this project. If that grant is awarded, then it's possible this project could be constructed in twenty twenty six. We discussed this project at our recent Transportation and Public Works Committee meeting and there was support for this project. The school district has also been supportive. There is an elementary school, Upstead Elementary School, which abuts this project. So and I endorse this project as well. Would be happy to answer any questions, but that does include my staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Regos. There we go, Mr. Tremolata.
As a parent of an Upstead Elementary student, too, technically, how does the schedule of this project work out with the school year? If this gets awarded and the grant wise, like what's the plan for just operations of the school dismissal and whatnot?
Yeah, any projects that we do near the Yeah, any projects that we do near the schools, what we want to do and what we did for the Stillson Avenue sidewalk project is to do those in the summertime, so it's less impactful on parents, on the kids, on the school buses. So we would target a start construction date of June fifteenth or June twentieth, whenever school gets out. And then we can write into the contract seventy five working days up till the anticipated or the known first day of the school, which would be roughly September first. And there's ample time to do a project like this in two and a half months. So that would be the plan.
Any other clarifying questions from Mr. Regos? Okay, Christina.
Sorry. The, the start of this would be, you know, preliminary evaluation and design, correct? And so when that starts, there'll be full evaluation of the ramifications of building this as it relates to neighboring neighborhoods and whatnot. Both, I think, I know we asked, we talked at T B W about existing sidewalks that might need ADA upgrades, but also any other design changes are going to come to light at that point, correct?
Yeah, correct. We would develop a couple of cross sections that we would look at, and the cross sections might vary depending on where you're at on Cedar Falls Way. We'd probably bring the chosen cross section to Transportation Public Works Committee to get a green light. This is what we want to move forward with. And we would be looking at, you know, drain, storm drainage collection and conveyance and infiltration for this corridor. Right now, the stormwater runoff that's generated from Cedar Falls Way, just sheet flows into the adjacent vegetation. You add curb and gutter, then all of a sudden it's, it's point drainage. And so there'd be catch basins, and we would have to develop some type of infiltration or detention system for that stormwater runoff. So it's a process that includes topographical surveying, geotechnical engineering and civil engineering to make this project a reality.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Regos? Brendan? Nope. Okay, if any members of the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we would invite you to come forward to the podium at this time. If you have request accommodation with the city clerk and wish to speak, please raise your hand through the virtual platform, and we'll take your comments after in person comments. Please remember to state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak. Come on up, Michael.
Mike Thomas, twelve thirty one La Forest, again, proving my point about the three minute limitation again. I have a lot of concerns about this project. I've spent the greater part of fourteen months with King County experts in septic code redesign. I have learned more about this thing than you ever wanted to know. Hearing concerns around the entire city, city, all the way to the sound, to hear, to mountains. My concern with this project, and by the way, I, I think it is an important safety improvement, is the stormwater design is quite aged along Cedar Falls Way, probably dates to the nineties. Along with that are numerous septic systems. My own communities, many on both sides of Cedar Falls Way, many behind Upstead. I'm very concerned about the impact of the septics in a couple of areas. One, if you move, make anything closer to a septic field, a horizontal distance, that can increase the cost to the septic owner when it's time to rebuild it. If you decrease the distance of the bottom of the drained field to water, that can increase their costs as well. It can in fact even prohibit a septic from being built. And third, there's always the risk of flooding, which is a cause for septic failure. So I'm gravely concerned about a mile of change in this quarter. That's also a critical area. The entire city is a critical aquifer recharge area. So it's very important that when you design this, that we get this upfront, that you think of the impact of the septics along Cedar Falls Way and many in proximity. Where is that stormwater going to go? That conveyance is very old, so where are you going to direct it? Does it end up further back? So I think this is an important consideration, and I wanted to put this on very early. I want to remind council, learn from county. The average cost of replacement of a septic was eighty four thousand. I mean, of a sewer conversion, it could be far higher. The replacement of a septic was forty two thousand. That's before some of the advanced treatment may be needed for something like this. I think it's fair for citizens with septics to ask for mitigation for anything that may impact or cause additional requirements to their septic or destroy or flood their septic system. So there, great caution is advised on this project that it's done with great sensitivity and care to the septics that are there, to the conveyance that's very old and many other aspects. So I wanted to get this concern out there early and upfront such that this can be properly studied and analyzed. I think the study also doesn't have much clarity around flow control. Are we going to direct too much water in an area? And what constitutes a level one analysis? So I'm very troubled by this, and I'm happy to discuss more with the city. And also, I intend to bring this to the attention of the county with some help that has discussed projects of this kind of nature. There's some very good assets in the county that on septic design. This concludes my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you again, Michael. Any other comments from public? Evening, welcome.
Good evening, council members. I'm Sarah Coley Brochard, thirteen ninety seven La Forest Drive, also in Michael's neighborhood. And we have a property that is right along the sidewalk. So firstly, thank you for taking this up. I know it seems like it's been pushed for several years that this sidewalk has now become a priority again. And having a two and five year old, we're really happy about that. And really thrilled, again, as you mentioned, for the connection to town, of course, being active family. We're riding our bikes, we're walking, and we'll also be going Upstead. So I think it's really great. I do want to just reach out and say, I, we welcome the, the invitation to be involved in further understanding when the civil engineering and the specifics come forward so that we can be sure, in fact, that there isn't any need for additional mitigation for sewers. I'm not a civil engineer. My dad is, but he was of no help on this issue. So again, we're trusting you, as you know, it's a small town, we can, and we're thankful for that. So just wanted to say, like, thank you for doing this. We are in support of it. And again, I can leave my email, and I'd be happy if there's additional meetings required with folks who have adjacent properties. So thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else present? Hi, Kate.
Hi. Caitlin, nine eighty Mountain View Boulevard. I just wanted to speak as someone that was a recipient of a similar project outside my own neighborhood with the sidewalk gap project that was completed outside of New Side View. I, I actually sent a email to Mr. Regos a couple of months ago saying that I was really impressed with the work and was really impressed with the way that the city staff so thoughtfully kept us in the loop. So we're on sewer, so I can't speak to the septic issue, but I did want to reassure if there are any doubts about this being handled well, that hopefully that can help alleviate some of those concerns. And I also wanted to say that it has greatly improved the visibility, turning left and right out of our neighborhood and the safety of the pedestrians there, which if you look at this map and you see the residential density and how many roads come out onto Cedar Falls Way, is really badly needed along there with all of the pedestrians, particularly young pedestrians. So I just wanted to say that I've seen those improvements in our neighborhood and that I'm looking forward to seeing those similar improvements for the neighborhoods that are to the east of us as well. So thank you for taking this on.
Thank you, Kate. Anybody else from the public wish to make a comment? Anybody online? Thank you, Erin. Okay, councilmember Cohen, do, would you like to make the motion, please?
Yes. Motion to approve A B twenty five dash zero three three, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with P H Consulting for design of the Cedar Falls Way pedestrian improvement project in form and content approved by the city attorney in an amount not to exceed three hundred thirty two thousand dollars.
Thank you very much. Just caught me off guard there. Ms. Cohen, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would. Cedar Falls Way is a very dark corridor, and I think sidewalks are going to be a huge safety improvement as well as the sidewalks that have been going in all over town have been a huge improvement for our citizens. They're using them. They seem to be out and about more, and I think it's a great project.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Torgason, you are second. Would you have a comment to make?
Sure. I'm excited about this project. You know, it's so unsafe on that road. There's been, you know, some, some accidents on that road, and I just am excited that we're working on this, and I can't wait for it to be completed. We need the lights. We need to be able to walk on that road. And I'm looking forward to, you know, we're going to have the, what do you call it? The water that goes in that gutter. What's that called? Stormwater, thank you. We have the stormwater put together. It's going to be awesome. So I'm super excited about this. And yeah, I'm definitely going to vote for this.
Fantastic. Anybody else on council wish to make a comment or, or two? Brendan? Okay, it's April first, isn't it still? Okay. Okay. Okay, any, any other, I guess I asked that already, you know, more council members that wish to comment? Okay. The motion before us is to approve A B twenty five dash thirty three, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with P H Consulting for design of the Cedar Falls Way pedestrian improvement project in a form and content approved by the city attorney in an amount not to exceed three hundred thirty two hundred thousand dollars. All in favor? Any, any opposed? That was a rousing all in favor. Thank you for that. And moving on to item fourteen, A B twenty five dash thirty four, motion authorizing contract with P H Consulting for Ballarat Avenue parking project. Mr. Regos, we're going to go back to you for the staff report.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Page one seventy seven in your packet, and this is another engineering design contract in the downtown area. So we've been working, staff has been working on the Ballarat Plaza, also called Taylor Park Gateway project for the past six, nine months or so. That's, and there's a vicinity map on page one ninety three where you can see the location of that. And that's in between North Bend Bar and Grill and the Shell Gas Station near the Train Depot facility. And the city has plans to make improvements in that sixty foot wide by a hundred foot long corridor. And one of the comments, or the comments that I consistently have heard from residents on that particular project and also from the ownership of the adjacent Shell Gas Station, North Bend Bar and Grill, was the concern for losing parking stalls. Next to North Bend Bar and Grill, there's ten parking stalls on the shoulder and angle parking there for this particular project. So in light of that, and also, we had a town hall meeting about a month and a half ago, back in late February, where we heard from some residents about the concern of adequate parking in that area is we have decided to move forward with a potential parking project to improve Ballarat Avenue on the opposite side of Taylor Park, but it's only two hundred feet away from McClellan Alley. And the current condition of that Ballarat Avenue is a narrow paved road. It's probably eighteen feet wide, gravel shoulders with large potholes. And it's, it's a bit unsightly, and there's not much room for parking. So staff believes that we can get twenty to twenty five parking stalls in this corridor. So there would be a net increase of ten or fifteen parking stalls with this project to the downtown corridor. We have talked with the consultants about this, and this is, would be a similar project, just much, much smaller than the Cedar Falls Way, but where we need topographical surveying. We need some geotechnical engineering work and, of course, civil engineering work in order to prepare shovel ready plans where we then can advertise to contractors. It's possible that we could complete the design of this project by the end of summer, if we move quickly, and advertise this project at the same time as the Ballarat Plaza project that we hope to start construction in the fall of two thousand and twenty five as well. So this particular contract would also be with P H Consulting. The amount is ninety two thousand dollars. Staff has prepared, prepared a pretty descriptive agenda bill on page one seventy seven for you. And that concludes my staff report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Regos. Any clarifying questions for Mr. Regos? Okay. All right, if any members of the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we would invite you to come to the podium at this time. If you have request accommodation with the city clerk, wish to speak, please, I'm sorry. Wish to speak, please raise your hand through the virtual platform, and we will take your comments after in person comments. Please remember to state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak for the record. Anybody? No one online? Okay, councilmember Cohen, would you like to make this motion, please?
Yes. Motion to approve A B twenty five dash zero three four, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with P H Consulting for the Ballarat Avenue Parking Project in a form and content approved by the city attorney in an amount not to exceed ninety three thousand dollars.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by my Ms. Cohen and second by Mr. Mark Jocelyn. Ms. Cohen, do you have any comments to make with your motion?
I think the parking is very needed. My one concern is that it's not as close to North Bend Bar and Grill on the shell as it looks in the dark. I think it'll be fine in the summer and for festivals. I, I do say we vote for this, but I also would like parking closer to our businesses.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jocelyn, do you have a comment to make to your motion?
I think this is great. One of the words I have learned being on council is activate or activation. And this is, I think, a big step towards using underutilized resources already at the city's disposal, that end of Ballarat, to put twenty or twenty five spots and their people will come to be familiar with it, understand that it's there, it will facilitate access, I think, both the Side View Park to the Train Depot and the weekends and the downtown businesses. Although it's, it's great, it isn't quite as close to North Bend Bar and Grill, but certainly I think there is a lighting aspect to it and just bringing, breathing life into that part of our downtown is part of a broader, long term vision and the fact that this could, you know, break ground even this year, I think, is really exciting, and I look forward to it. Thanks.
Mr. Jocelyn, anybody else from council? Mr. Christina?
I'm just going to echo Councilman Jocelyn that the parking on the weekends for the Train Depot is extremely busy, and this is going to be ideal parking for those families that come to ride the train. And I think that's a very positive thing, so.
Great, Mr. Tremolata.
Yeah, I was just having a conversation before this meeting with some Citizens Academy folks about how we don't have a lot of acreage in this town and any piece of real estate that we have, we should activate to piggyback off councilmember Jocelyn's comment. So I think this is critical. I think it'll be great, especially as we're about to head into some of folks' favorite time with the farmer's market. This is, this will be great overflow parking there. And I'd be remiss to say that it will be highly utilized when we have an aquatic center in town in the future.
And with that, anybody else? This is Ms. Torgason.
I think this is excellent. I'm excited that we're, because we do need more parking and the fact that we're going to be able to find some. I think relatively, you know, we're taking a piece of property that we already own, and we're, it's going to be a little bit relatively easier than having to buy a property and waiting for all that. So I'm excited that we're doing this. I don't think it's that far from North Bend Bar and Grill. I mean, it's literally, it's going, you're going through a park. It's nice, nice little walk, so I think it's going to be excellent. I'm voting for it.
All right, anybody else? Brendan? Nope. Okay. Very good. Okay, where am I? Ms. Cohen, okay, they have motion before us is to approve A B twenty five dash zero three four, authorizing the mayor to execute on a contract with P H Consulting for Ballarat Avenue Parking Project in a form and content approved by the city attorney in an amount not to exceed ninety three thousand dollars. Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This passes unanimously. Thank you again. Now we're moving on to our additional last item, item fifteen, A B twenty five dash zero three five, motion approving police services schedule. Mr. Larson, please, would you provide that report for us tonight?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll also ask if Martin Chaw has any additional comments as I'm speaking that I'd wish he would also interject. This agenda bill, it is staff's recommendation that council approve alternate one, the schedule listed in this agenda bill for consideration of the police services selection process. The schedule recognizes four key dates. April eighth, which is an open meeting here in this council chambers, will be presentations by Soquonmi and King County. April eleventh, the written proposals from each of those parties will be due. On April fifteenth, another open meeting here, a council meeting, staff will present the scored results from the presentations and the written proposals. And then on May sixth, another open meeting of the council, regular meeting, a council consideration and direction on police services. Lastly, council will have the opportunity on April fifteen to review and modify the remainder of the schedule, if needed, including any additional meeting dates that may be desired. Mayor, that concludes my report. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Any clarifying questions, group? Torgason?
On the April twenty On the um, April 22nd, it's the optional meeting work study. Um, I'm wondering about um, it's not a voting session, so I'm, I'm imagining, because I, there's no details on how that's gonna go, but I'm thinking council members are just gonna present their pros and cons of each candidate or something like that, or do we have an outline for that particular meeting?
We don't at the moment, but uh, we anticipate that we could discuss that perhaps at April 15th, just depending on, on the uh, the results of the scoring, and if council really desires to want to have any additional meetings, we can certainly arrange those before May 6th. That would be the desire of council. We wanted to wait and see how things went with the written proposals and the presentations. It may or may not be necessary for council to have any additional meetings before May 6th.
Any other clarifying questions? Brendan?
Thank you, Your Honor. So how, how are you anticipating the determination on whether or not we should have a following work study, following up staff presentation on April 15th? I mean, what was gonna be the criteria to determine that?
I think it'll be, go ahead, Mayor.
May I speak to that, Your Honor? What I would anticipate, and it's nothing more than that, um, that there, we will gather for a regular meeting of council on April 15th and be presented with summary information or evaluations from staff on both the written and in-person presentations from potential vendors. I expect that will then, during that regular council meeting, lead to a conversation amongst council. It is at that point that uh, council may decide to continue that same conversation at a work study the following week. We could make that determination now and say, yes, we're absolutely meeting, but that's what I would see happening, because as Councilmember Torgerson pointed out, in my mind, there is no explicit agenda. That day was set aside explicitly for this purpose of this body continuing to be in conversation about uh, provision of police services. But it's also true that there is no planned presentations, no new information from vendors, no actual agenda. The, the agenda would be for us to continue in a public forum, but absent the ability to vote, because it is a work study, to continue that conversation. I will note, uh, well, I'll leave it at that, because then, I'm sorry, the plan would be on May 6th. Well, and I, if I'm not wrong, and this is, I guess, a clarifying question perhaps for staff, that the agenda bill to be presented to us on May 6th would be available. Well, when might that be available?
Staff is of the uh, understanding that we would be available to make it, well, excuse me, we'll make the agenda bill available to council most likely well in advance of the May 6th meeting.
Possibly by April 22nd.
Yes, I think so.
So. So there would, you know. So it's possible that there may be an agenda bill on May, on April 22nd that isn't available to us on the 15th. I don't wanna make a commitment to that. I also don't wanna be misunderstood as suggesting that there would be no new information were an agenda bill to come forward.
We anticipate having it available on or about uh, April 22nd. If I could also add to uh, a, a council member Jaws had mentioned, on April 15th, for instance, council may have some additional questions based on the results of the scoring that staff will present. And that would obviously require us to do perhaps some additional research or follow up with either of the parties. And so we'd want to have that in, that time available, if you will, following week or going into May 6th to answer those questions of council. And. Example.
And if I may add my second question, which is, my, my understanding and recollection of how this has unfolded is that we, as a collective body, have determined that it's significantly important that all council members be available, and the dates that will be set forth would, would be such that all council would be present so that we could have a collective conversation. With the April 15th date, as I've stated in the previous times when we've talked about our availability, I'm not gonna be there. So I'm trying, I'm struggling to understand why, uh, and maybe this is the question for you, is why is April 15th now selected as a date when that was the experience, or at least what I thought the understanding was of this body as a whole, is that we needed, and we all agreed, that we'd all be there for these healthy discussions? Am I incorrect in my recollection?
Having been engaged in, you know, conversations, uh, it's a baseline, I believe, that there are regularly scheduled council meetings and regularly scheduled uh, work study dates that are on everyone's calendar. And that takes, I mean, that's the baseline that we have to start from in scheduling these public forums, in my opinion, council member. Um, I don't mean to push back against your assertion, obviously, the preferred model is that everyone be present for important discussions, but having spoken with all council, there is not a day absent April 8th, I believe, that all council are able, well, April tonight, and then April 8th, all council are able to be present. Not all council are available on the 15th, not all council are available on the 22nd, and not all council are available on the 29th.
I think my question still stands. Wasn't that an agreement going into this, from this body, on at least two separate occasions where we aligned that it was gonna be critical that we have that discussion as a collective? This present schedule negates that.
Clearly, if you believe there was such an agreement, it wasn't binding, and that isn't being carried forward at this time.
Mr. Tremolata?
Uh, so just to be clear, we are not asked to adopt a work study on April 22nd. And if a work study were to occur, somebody would make a motion on the 15th for there to be a work study in the future, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Excuse me.
Any other clarifying questions? Ellen?
I thought April 22nd was a date of an existing work study, so there would be no motion needed. We would just have to schedule it.
Yes, it's, it's an optional date. You'd have to select it, though, on, we believe, on April 15th, if you wanted to go forward. Now, there's a potential another item that came up tonight that you removed from the agenda that you may entertain as a subject matter for a work study on April 22nd. Uh, that's, that's a possibility. I, I, I'm not suggesting that that should be the date, but I, I think there was some expectation of bringing that forward to a council work study in the near future. But uh, I'll, I'll leave it out of the discussion for now.
Yeah, the, the point I think I'm trying to make is, as we talk about it, these are dates that the council members have known about and have been set up on these dates and take their time. There are gonna be times when people, council members can't make an event, just as I will not be able to make the council meeting on the 8th, but I understand that. This would be another time for the council to debate this together so that we can further clarify and come together as a council.
Okay. I want to clarify. I, I, I understand that. So, but it, there still would be a mo-, if there is no motion on the 15th, there is no work study on the 22nd? Or is?
May I ask a clarifying question of our council? It's my understanding that uh, it's up to the council to call work studies. That's within our prerogative. The process by which that happens, I am frankly uncertain of. I don't think it requires an agenda bill or a motion. It's simply an agreement amongst us. If we tell staff we wanna meet on April 22nd, we will be meeting. So I, I think we're making a little bit of mountain out of molehill, but for reasons, um, I have every expectation that we'll be, be meeting on the 22nd. My understanding is the agenda bill before us, it's going to be moved as it as, uh, if needed. So that would require further affirmation from council, but I think it's no more than the knot of the head.
Well said.
Uh, well, was Mr. Tremolata's clarifying question answered?
Yeah.
Not entirely, but I, I think I get it.
Okay. Um, any other clarifying questions? Okay, if any members of the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we would invite you to come forward to the podium at this time. Uh, if you have a requested accommodation with the city clerk and wish to speak, please raise your hand through the virtual platform, and we will take your comments after in-person comments. Please remember to state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak for the, for the um, record. Anybody? Anybody online? Okay. Um, Councilmember Jocelyn, please make the motion.
I move to approve AB 25-035, setting the police services schedule related to request for proposals and decision-making, alternative one.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Jocelyn made the motion, seconded by Mr. Gothel. Uh, Councilmember Jocelyn, would you like to speak to your motion?
I appreciate staff pulling this together and hope that uh, council finds a way to support it. Uh, we've aided voting in favor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Gothel, do you have any comments to make with your motion?
Yeah, I, I, I think we need to understand, this is one of the toughest decisions we're gonna have to make, as it is. The times and dates have been placed on here are times and dates that have been dated out for every council member. I understand sometimes people have things that get in their way. But as we've gone with this process, there's been times where we get information, and then we want to come back and discuss it. Work study usually is a time where we can do a little bit more, you know, or in a, in a quieter room, discuss our feelings, our thoughts, and try to get other people's, other council members' inputs, as we do. I think it's a crucial point in this discussion to have that place there. Uh, you know, I'm concerned that it isn't optional, and I think it's something we should for those that can make it, because I think it's important, because if we all know, we walk out of these meetings, we think about it for a week, and we come up with more discussions, or we talk with residents who give us more input. That's the point where we can now, after the presentation, you know, of the scoring, can come back with citizens' comments and suggestions and our own suggestions. So I, I am supportive of this, and thank uh, Mayor Trem, Mayor Protem for his hard work. I know he's been working very hard of trying to make us all happy. Um, and it's been a lot of work, so I wanna thank you for that.
Mr. Gothel, if any other council members wish to make a comment? Chris? Oh. Brendan? Brendan, you're on.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I, I agree. I, I appreciate the arm wrestling that's happening here. Um, I am concerned, because when we said on this, it's been said more than once that it's critical. This is one of the biggest decisions we're making. We all aligned that we need to be there, at least for some level of discussion. Um, and, and I think Mr. Tremolata's question, the answer to that is, if there is no motion put forward on April 15th to have further discussion, there will be no further discussion. So therefore, I would like to modify the schedule and get rid of the parenthetical that says optional meeting for the work study. I think there's ample opportunity for discussion on April 15th. I think there's also follow-up discussion that can happen on a work study, whether it be the 22nd or the 29th. But to Mr. Gothel's point, there's gonna be a lot of public processing that happens in this. First of all, we have the presentations on April 8th, then we have the staff coming back with their recommendations and scoring on the 15th, and hopefully, there'll be some discussion on that date. And then we'll have an ability to have focused debate time amongst all of us with staff on a work study that follows up. So I would recommend that we move, remove that parenthetical optional work study and actually schedule it so that it's on the books. We always have the ability to omit it or delete it or undo it at a later date. But if there's no motion made, it may not happen. And I don't know if I'm suggesting uh, an amendment to the motion or not, but, but perhaps I am.
Sorry, Brendan, I mean to interrupt you. Are you making a motion to amend this? Are you?
Yeah. I'm gonna make a motion to amend that. Thank you, Your Honor, for the, for the direction there.
Yep. Can you clarify it for us so we can?
Sure. I, I, I move that we amend the schedule to omit the parenthetical that states optional meeting at the council work study on April 22nd, so that it stands on the schedule as an actual scheduled work study discussion for the police services contract on the 22nd.
Hallelujah. Thank you very much, everybody. I can't remember it. Did someone write that down? Possibly. Thank you. Lost me a parenthetical. Just kidding. Well said, Brendan. Okay, so let's move on to. I'd like, yes, uh, I'd love you to speak to your amendment, Brendan.
Well, I, I think locking it down now, this would be the third time this body has met to discuss our schedules and availabilities, and now we have it in an official template. I think locking that down now safeguards the fact that we will have the ability for discussion. It will also allow ample time for the public to react to each of us or to us all as a holistic body. So thank you very much for supporting that, if you do vote in favor for it. Thank you.
Very welcome. Uh, did someone second that? Who was that? Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree with him. I, I mean, I, I, I think we know the difference between sitting in this room and actually sitting in German and talking, having a weak timeframe to be able to get input from our neighbors, because this is going to be, like I said, this is probably the most important vote this body is going to have to make this year for the public safety of our community. And I think it is important for us to get everybody's input, and after they, and like I said, we get a lot of information. We, one of us may have a decision one way and come at a meeting and listen to other people's input and have more data which, to vote on May 6th and feel comfortable on a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Gothel. Anybody else on council have wished to have a comment? Mr. Torgerson?
Yeah, I think it's, I, I think it's better than being wishy-washy. Maybe we meet that day or not. I, I like having a set schedule. Um, and, and I see the value of us talking about the pros and cons of each scenario and hearing it out from each other. So I, I think that's, we also need the feedback from the community. Super important, so I totally agree.
Very good. Thank you very much. Anybody else I missed? Brendan, is that your, your hand still?
Yes.
Okay.
It, it is, and, and I don't mean to oversell the point, but we're, we're also gonna have an agenda on that full council meeting that'll have other items. And so having it rushed and stacked up against other discussions just seems to me, the more time we have to process this, the far better we have. Thank you.
Thank you again. Um, okay, so Susie, I'm gonna, for the motion. I didn't write, I didn't write.
You're just moving in the amendment.
Oh, we're just.
I'll go ahead and restate the motion, Mayor, and Councilmember Elwood can correct me, but I believe that the motion pending is a motion to amend alternative one to strike the optional meeting parenthetical for April 22nd.
Thank you.
Yep. Excellent. Thank you very much. All, um, let's take a, let's, well, all in favor.
Aye.
Of the amendment, yeah.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that's, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Yeah, that's the full motion. Going back to the full motion now, uh, motion before us is to approve AB 25-035, setting the police, pardon me? Oh, yeah. Oh, I'll take come right now on it. Okay, there we go. Anybody wish to make a comment? So from the, um, from the member of the audience. So let's go to do that one again. Uh, if you'd like to comment about this agenda item, we would invite you to come to the podium at this time. Uh, please remember to state your name, your address. You have three minutes to speak for the record. For those who are online who wish to speak, we'll take your comments after in-person comments. Nope. Okay, we're all good. Okay, so council, council comments? On the main motion, so. Yeah, so the, the motion before us is to approve AB-25-035, setting the police services schedule related to requests for proposals and decision-making as amended, um, all in favor? Oh, comment, sorry. Any more comments?
Council comments.
Yeah. Any more?
Yeah.
Okay. Tremolata?
After all, I, I'm just, I will not support this amendment, just so you know, because to Councilmember Elwood's comments, we did a heck of a lot of work a while ago on all the dates, and um, frankly, I was never in agreement for moving uh, the RFP date uh, because of request of one of the applicants. I think we worked, did a ton of work on the RFP. We shouldn't have moved it in the first place. So I will hold to the original dates that we discussed, I believe, months ago. Uh, so I will not support.
Is that an amendment? Or?
A motion.
Well.
Nope. Any more comments from council?
Yes.
Brendan?
I have a question for Councilmember Tremolata. Is that a, are you suggesting to amend the schedule back to the original? Because I agree with you.
I'm, no, no, I'm not making an amendment. I'm just voicing my rejection of the current item on the table.
It has been heard. Yes, okay. Have I covered everybody? Okay, did I? Okay, we're gonna go for the vote now. Okay, everybody ready? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, uh, motion passes uh, six to one. The nay is from Mr. Tremolata. Thank you, everybody. Uh, we are finally gonna move on to Mayor Council Administrator Concerns and Initiatives. Let's go with Brendan online first. I know you're late out there in Michigan.
Yeah, because you, you made a comment earlier, is it still April 1? Yeah, because you, you made a comment earlier, is it still April 1st? Well, in 10 minutes where I'm at, it will no longer be April.
Just checking in.
It'll be April 2nd, so April Fools, everybody.
I move quickly when you're having fun.
Yeah, exactly. I, I'll just reserve it to my, my little quip there. Thank you, everybody. Be safe out there.
Thank you, Ms. Tremolata, or Ms. Torgerson.
What? That's news I haven't heard. My husband will be very upset. April Fools. There you go. Oh, wow, okay. So, you know, the weather's, good weather's coming. I'm super excited about that, and I can't begin to tell you, I'm super excited about the Cedar Falls potential project being completed sooner rather than later, because it was on our, our list for a long time ago, and we've moved it up, and I'm super happy about that. So that's what I have to say. Thanks.
That was fun. Thank you very much. Ms. Colan?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Tremolata?
Baseball season is here. Little League has started. Torgerson Park is going to be filled with kiddos all over the place, so just heed carefully when you're driving around. But yeah, we're excited. Go check out some baseball. Tons of games ahead.
Excellent. And Mr. Jocelyn?
I wanna thank fellow council members, Brendan, for your presence and going out of your way to join us. And just the engagement. This is, you know, it's not easy to do this, and I am gonna take the opportunity to reflect on. This is governance, you know, this is engagement, and our trying to get this right, get the best information available to us to make the best decision possible. I will then segue into my sincere personal concern for what's happening in our country at the national level. I am eligible for Social Security. I'm 67 and a half. When I apply for it, do you think anyone will be there to pick up the phone? I don't know, but it worries me. They're going through the basement of the Smithsonian Institution, and they're firing park rangers and postal workers and of, you know, public health, 10,000 people who help protect their public health have been laid off. I mention this simply because on April 5th, this coming Saturday, there are gatherings and protests and people presumably in the, at least on the sidewalks throughout our region. I plan to be one of them, and if anyone is similarly, similarly interested in just being present and showing up and pushing back against the direction that's been taken by the administration in Washington, I would encourage you to do so. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Jocelyn. Oh, sorry, Kim, we can't do that.
Yeah, I just did.
Yeah, that's okay. Ms. Ruston?
Yeah, thank you. Today, Public Health and Safety met, and we had an excellent presentation by Kat with about wildfire danger, and so I encourage, we'll get the information out, and I encourage everybody to take a look at it because I did learn quite a few things about what we can do to protect our property, and I think it's important for all of us, especially as we head into wildfire season. So that's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Gothel.
I'd add that that was a wonderful presentation, something that we might want to do here up front, and, you know, there were some things that came out there. Some of them that I don't think we thought about. If we look at what happened in California, it wasn't the properties that were near the, the forest areas, but properties that were inside urban areas, and we all are in that. And one of the things that we learned is not to have fences within six feet of your property up against your property, which kind of made me think that that's in, in conflict with our homeowners associations that allow us to put cedar fence, or requires to put cedar fences if we want up, but have no other options to make that change the front to protect our house. And that might be, this is a call out from my standpoint to our HOAs to take a look at that and maybe consider giving another option as opposed to cedar right up against your house to protect our houses. If you don't think it's gonna happen here at some point, you're mistaken. With that, what you saw tonight is how we make legislation. I know it wasn't pretty. Some of us might need to go back and learn a little step from Jurassic Parliament that we just had, but I enjoyed that conversation. Hope we continue to debate things that are important to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Larson?
Just one item for council. You may have recalled receiving an email about this luncheon on Thursday. If you're so inclined to attend, we'd love to have you there. I know that was mentioned perhaps less than a quorum, but you certainly are all invited if you can attend, and we can make arrangements for that if necessary. Susie's at your beck and call, like I am, to ensure that we properly notify the, the meeting, if it is such a thing, but you're, we'd love to have you there, so please consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. I second that. The yard waste recycling program will start Saturday, April 5th, from 8:00 AM to noon at Public Works. Program is open to select Saturdays through October and is available to all who reside in the 98045 zip code area. Valley Animal Partners, a local nonprofit organization along with Seattle Veterinary Outreach is offering free vaccines and low-cost vet care to people living unhoused or with low income for their dogs and cats. On Wednesday, April 2nd, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Pet Place Market located at 213 Bendigo Boulevard North. Are you a North Bend resident with appreciation for local open space and historic preservation? If so, please consider applying to serve as North Bend Citizen Representative to Meadowbrook Farm Preservation Association. Please visit the news section of the city website to find out more about the yard waste recycling program, low-cost vet care clinic, and how to serve as North Bend Citizens Representative to Meadowbrook Farm Preservation and Association. Thank you one and all tonight. Thank you, staff, for all your hard efforts. Thank you for this wonderful group of individuals that held on most of the night. And Brendan, thank you for joining us from quite, quite a distance, literally. And, and I get a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Thank you very much. Motion, yeah, by Mr. Gothel. Everybody have a great week. Thank you so much.